Good evening. I'd like to welcome you here to this regular Board of Education meeting on May 20th. And thank you retirees, if there's any still here that came to visit us. And, um, hm? They all bailed? Okay, well, they're pretty excited, so I get it. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. However, there will be time provided for public participation during the meeting. It should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agendas several days prior to this actual meeting. Therefore, we have had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. The Board will hold their next regular meeting Tuesday, June 17th, right here in the library. Guests and participants are asked to silence your cellphones and put them away during the duration of the meeting. Will you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
Yeah, I know. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Moorehouse?
Mrs. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Effernan?
Here.
Mr. Carlo? Mr. Leidig?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
This will be your first time to address the Board. Comments are to be limited to three minutes, and no one may speak more than once on the same topic. You can also email to comments@woodridge.k12.oh.us during the meeting. Any discussion of school employees would have to be conducted in executive session per the Board of Education bylaws, Section 169.1. Would anyone like to address the Board? No? Okay. Let's move to the approval of the agenda. I will move.
One second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Right, well, it is hard to believe that we're already at the end of the school year, and I'm going to switch my section up. So I'm going to start with our recognition, just because we have graduation happening tomorrow, and this is such a huge milestone for our students and for our families. And tonight, we are really lucky to have our valedictorian here, and Mr. Di Tomaso is going to share and introduce Tyler for us.
Yes, for sure. Tyler, come on up. So, um, the, uh, our valedictorian, Tyler Mathis, right? Um, the, uh, to the Board and to all who are here, I sat with the building leadership team just a little bit about a month ago, and we had talked about, you know, we talked about, you know, recognizing groups, recognizing teams, recognizing individuals, and it's been that way throughout this year. We've done groups, we've done individuals, and this last BLT, it was unanimous, right? Because Tyler has left his mark on Woodridge High School, for sure, for sure. And to do so in such a way, and in such a broad way, and yet still be the number-one academic student in the class is quite an achievement. So, um, and, you know, and in just a few days, Jesse and I are going to be talking with the eighth graders, and we're going to talk to them about, you know, we want you to be a part of the school, and we want you to involve yourself. And I got to tell you, I wonder if at eighth grade or even before, Tyler took that as seriously as any student ever, because he is involved in literally every part of this building in some way or another. He's just one of those students who desires to experience everything, truly. The other part, too, is that when teachers who didn't even have him brought him up, they know about him. They know about what Tyler did, or he's had an occasion to communicate with them, or be a part of, you know, in their classrooms, or connect with some of the students. And that's what you're going to find when I read some of the comments from the teachers, and also, by the way, a couple of Tyler's friends, too, made some comments, which are wonderful. So the thread that runs through the teachers, you're going to see, is consistent. It is, not only, by the way, is he an incredibly gifted math student. Two math teachers said the best that they've ever had in their careers, and that's 20 years and 22 years. But also, the way that he goes about the daily classroom grind, right? I mean, the idea of getting into the kind of math that he does, or the kind of work that he does, he's always helping students. One of his teachers will read here in a second. He's patient with other students, maybe more patient than the teacher. And so, the idea that he, that he's in that room and being that kind of a student is pretty incredible. Kim Mochenbein, one of the strongest math students that she's ever had the opportunity to teach, and but what makes Tyler shine is the understanding of the content, but his willingness to help other students. Katie Arbogast, Latin teacher and academic advisor, academic, um, academic challenge advisor. Outstanding student, privileged to teach. His success inspired other classmates to work harder at a higher academic level. Scott Klein talked about, he's the ultimate performer, both onstage and in the classroom. Brings energy and enthusiasm every single time. By the way, Tyler was a production manager for all the years behind the, you know, kind of behind being an actor, but also acted in the same, in the very same place. Jeff Decker, in 22 years, Tyler is my all-time favorite student. Right? Um, this is, this is one of the best parts. He thinks and reasons through problems is incredibly impressive. However, his character outshines even that. Uh, he works so hard to make sure he's not only has his assignments done, but that he truly understands it at a level that even the writers of our textbooks would underestimate. He also cares so much about his classmates, he takes extra time to explain things to them in ways that may be different from my teaching, or to supplement my teaching, and he is so patient, even when they don't understand. And his involvement in our curriculums demonstrates how this can add up to so much of a student's high school experience. In the end, he's just a fun person to be around. Leah Norris was here late one night, as she always is, and Tyler happened to be here after a production and worked his way through a computer issue that she had with the state, truly. So, you know, dealt with technology, made it all the way through, didn't leave until it was done. Patty Lammer, shiny example of what it means to be a dedicated member of the performing arts, actively involved in theater and choir, uplifting attitude, positive force in rehearsals performance, behind the scenes. He not only contributes, but also creates a spirit of teamwork and encouragement. So that's the other part, too. He's been in theater. And I asked him, I said, well, you know, what did you play? Give me a couple of the parts. He said, okay, and just started listing them off. A father, a pirate, a cloud, an FBI agent, a king, a misogynist, Fester, Uncle Fester, a writer, a peasant, and the last one, the best one, a guy in a potato sack. So, um, that, that part, too, he was a bowler. He was in choir, rhapsody, voted to be on Homecoming and Prom Court. He is literally the math student of the year chosen. And then, one of the better, I think one of the best, actually, accolades is that he's Bulldog of the Year. He was chosen for that. And we'll see that tomorrow night, too. And he received that at senior recognition, and we'll also see it tomorrow night. But you know what? His friend, one of his best friends, Lily Sterling, said, Tyler is always ready, with a helping hand, and is always great to have a genuine conversation with. One of my favorite memories in high school is dancing backstage with him during the shows. He deserves all of the recognition he's receiving. Tyler Mathis.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. What wonderful things they said about you. Congratulations.
Do you want to, we could take a picture with you? I'll be fine. All right. Take a picture. Do you want to get that too? For him? All right. Bob? Thank you. Tyler, I just thought of something I wanted to ask you. So you have been one of my favorite people to watch in all of your performances, and I don't know if Mr. D. said this or not, or I missed it, but are you going to be pursuing that when you go to college?
So, I want to keep acting when I'm in college. I'm pursuing a finance degree, but ideally, I will be able to keep acting at Kent State.
Oh, that's fantastic. That's great. Well, gosh, it's hard to transition to textbooks, but this is going to be amazing, because we're going to hear about our new science resources and texts that are coming to us this coming school year, if you approve it, right?
Yeah, this is a tough act to follow. I've got valedictorian, I've got retirees, I've got Al, I mean, there's all kinds of people that I'm following here tonight that make this a tough job. So, as you may remember, a year ago, I stood in front of you to ask for your recommendation for the secondary science textbooks that we were looking to adopt, and that was sixth through 12. And this year, our elementary teachers, who I want to thank very much for all their hard work in selecting a few different options for textbooks, and I'll explain that in a second, but I want to thank our elementary teachers for working very hard on this. The tough thing anymore about any kind of professional development, or teachers, you know, needing to leave the classroom to look at books and kind of kick the tires, is getting substitutes, and a lot of them aren't exactly thrilled, and I get it, that they don't, you know, they're going to leave their kids for the day, or half a day, or two days. And so, I know that's a really tough ask sometimes for teachers, is to go to the ESC and look at a bunch of science books, but luckily, we've got some teachers who are really into that sort of thing. So, it turned out to be a pretty good couple of days, and they made some really good choices as far as what they, what they want to teach for next year. So, I also want to thank, Mrs. Zender is our ESC consultant with science, and she kind of guided them through this process. We haven't had new science textbooks at the elementary level since 2011, so obviously, we were due. If you remember, a couple of years ago, at this time, I was having you take a look at math textbooks, K through 12. So we've been pretty busy the last three years, trying to get our curriculum up to date and getting new textbooks for our students. So, um, there are, it's a little bit of a different world over the past few years when you look at textbooks. Textbooks are kind of, except at the secondary level, the high school level, textbooks, as we kind of think of them, K through, K through eight, really aren't your standard textbooks anymore. They have what they call, like, workbooks, and things that kids can use and take home, and then we get a new set for the next year, and a new set for the year after. That's all part of the budget of the books. And in science, in particularly, what we learned from the middle school last year, was there are a lot of options for kids to have hands-on, manipulative, student investigative guides. Science is really in, you know, wrapping themselves around that idea of keeping kids active in the classroom, investigating, which a lot of people would say that was a long time in coming from our textbook manufacturers, but there's a lot of really cool science stuff out there. And so what our teachers have selected are three different things. There's, it's called the Smithsonian for the Classroom, which is what our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers selected last year. There's also something called the Flex Curriculum, and there's also something called the Full Option Science System, or FOSS, F-O-S-S. FOSS is what our science teachers at the middle school also wanted to have for this year, and it's been, they love it. There's all kinds of kits, and there's all kinds of dead bugs and all kinds of cool things in these kits, that when they come in the summertime, they're really these, like, these big Rubbermaid, you know, carriers that, you know, we didn't need, we were a little afraid to open them up, because I wasn't sure if it was going to be a cat experience like Mary had, but there were some really neat things in there. So the Smithsonian for the Classroom, some of the key benefits are museum-quality resources, so obviously, the Smithsonian Institution has a huge collection of artifacts, primary sources, expert knowledge that they now incorporate into their, into their books. There's an interdisciplinary approach, where it connects science and history, and art and culture in meaningful ways. There's digital integration, which is just an absolute must now for textbooks K through 12, and that's where there's virtual field trips, there's interactive exhibits, multimedia resources. When you look at this stuff, it is so different than how we did science when we were in elementary school. It's just really cool stuff. It puts the kids, like, you know, at the museum, or at different places around the world, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty neat, pretty neat text. It exposes students to authentic, real-world learning materials. Obviously, it encourages critical thinking, a lot of inquiry-based learning in science, and that is what we start off with at the elementary level here as well. Cultural contexts that bring the subjects to life. The Flex Curriculum, as the name suggests, it allows teachers to customize instruction based on what the student needs are. And I know you've heard all about differentiated instruction over the years, and different ways in order to get kids more involved in their learning, and the Flex Curriculum helps to do that. It provides all kinds of entry points for diverse learning styles and abilities. Formative, summative assessments are built in, and again, the digital and print options, where there's an integration between traditional, kind of a paper pencil, and technology-based learning. And finally, the Full Option Science System, the FOSS, is what, which is what we're using at the middle school as well. Again, those are hands-on learning, research-based, curriculum-centered, on active investigation, sequencing learning progressions, emphasizing connections between scientific discipline. There's all kinds of support for teachers, all kinds of training for teachers throughout the time that we have these textbooks. Usually, a textbook span with, with our new kind of generation of textbooks is six to seven years, where we, you know, sign on to have all these things brought to us every year. So for example, this summer, we're already getting our kits and our FOSS and Smithsonian things for the middle school. They just automatically come, and we get those dispersed to the teachers in the summer, and they're ready to go for another, for another fall. So, the great part about all this is there is, it's, it all works together, in terms of the hands-on, in terms of the kind of traditional learning, and the online learning with all three of these systems. It allows teachers to phase that implementation, once they are trained, and they, you know, are able to, we'll start professional development with them at the beginning of the school year, and kind of just keep providing them with that as they go throughout the first year, even in the second year. And it really does do a lot of what research is finding that kids need at the elementary level in terms of science, and that's research-based, standards-aligned curriculum, hands-on learning experiences with science, as you know, if you've been around little kids at the elementary level especially, they love that. The middle school kids love it as well. Obviously, high school kids get to do it with dissecting different things, and, you know, doing different labs. So it's a really good, comprehensive coverage across the subject areas of science as they go K through five. So we're really excited about this adoption for science. That'll obviously conclude our, our new science books or resources for K through 12. And I just wanted, again, to thank the elementary teachers for all the hard work in doing.
Thank you.
So, where can they find the books? Anybody that wants to review on?
Yep, they'll be over at the Board Office. I'm getting some samples from Mrs. Zender here tomorrow and Thursday, so I'll have those at the Board Office for 30 days until our next meeting, and folks can come up and take a look and see all the things that we have for our elementary kids.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All right, that's all I have for you.
That's all you got? Okay. Ms. Moorehouse?
So, a couple of things as far as Treasury Report. April was a good month, just because we get some money from the county, so that's always a good thing. That's the last we'll receive from them for this fiscal year. I would like to give a shout-out to Tina Hastings, Debbie Campbell, and Kristy Freed. They wrote some grants that hopefully you're going to approve of coming in the consent agenda, so that's always appreciative. One thing I really wanted to talk about, though, is the Honor States Office just came up with something new. It's called Financial Health Indicators for School Districts. They've had these out for other local governments, but never schools until now, and it's, I mean, it just hit within the past couple of weeks, so I'm still learning what all they are. As far as Woodridge goes, and this is going to be basically part of the release of the audit coming in the future, there are 15 indicators, and there's five of them that they said we need to keep an eye on. And three are cautionary, and one are critical. The cautionary ones, the best way I can understand and describe these, is the cautionary ones, two of them have to do with revenue that is designated for specific expenditures, and they're saying that that is increasing. So what they, what they look at is if you've got funds available for anything, and if that part is decreasing versus the amount that's designated you have to spend on things, and they're saying it's increasing. Well, yes, that is, because the state funds, you know, when you get gifted and disadvantaged pupil, and different aids like this, well, yes, that money has to be spent on those things. So they're saying that's cautionary. The other thing is, this is kind of unique, and this is called, we operate everything on a cash basis, so we can report Al Cash coming in, Al Cash going out. We also have to report then, every November, what's called our GAAP paper, we generally accept accounting principles. It's more of an accrual basis. One of the things they look at is taxes, as people pay their taxes, and when the county can give them to us. So, from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24, that changed. Basically, what that means is people paid their taxes more upfront as of June 30th on '23 than they did in '24. So when you look at it on paper, that tax amount went down, so they're saying it's cautionary. All it means is, it's when people pay their taxes, there's nothing we can do about it. So they're just saying, keep an eye on it. The critical things they looked at are, we're saying, that, again, when I'm reading it, is that expenses are rising greater than our revenues? Well, yeah, they are. So it's kind of given critical. The other thing is the sickly balances are increasing. And, you know, we encourage people to come to work, we don't want them using sickly, but it's available, but they're saying that's one of the things in there now they look at, is sickly balances. So, like I say, out of the 15 indicators, we went from '23, apparently, we had one indicator they wanted us to look at, and it decreased to five. So this is, again, something I'm still trying to digest and understand, but they will be coming out on an annual basis now. So, as I learn more about them, I will be sharing with the Board of Education a little bit more about them.
Okay.
That's all I have for you this evening.
It is recommended the Board approve the Treasury's report as presented. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
It brings us to correspondence and updates. Does anyone have anything from committees, or? No? I just have a thing that I went to the duck race. That was very, at the end of April. It was very exciting, to see all these entrepreneur class did this, and all these thousands, 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 thousands of these little ducks going down the little stream or lake, or whatever it's called at, um...
Waterworks.
Waterworks, yeah, thank you. Waterworks, yeah, the kids were just in awe of all this, you know? And do we ever find out how much we made from that?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
No, because it goes through junior achievement, and once they have everything settled out, then they give us income, so I don't know yet.
Yeah. The only thing was, the kids wanted their ducks. I'm like, how would you ever find your duck, your number, in all these, I mean, they're obviously like 10,000 or something, it was like, unbelievable. So anyway, that was fun.
Most half of them went down the river.
Yeah, I know, I know. Was your husband down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, the firemen were down there with the...
The boom broke, so then, yeah.
Oh, the net thing, trying to collect all the ducks, and, you know, well, somebody found them somewhere, so.
Someone got a little surprised, yeah.
Put something in a bottle, and throw it out, and people get it, that's the same thing. Okay. Committee reports. Okay, I will move to approve the consent agenda items.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
It brings us to student workers. I'll move.
One second.
Discussion.
So I just have a couple of items to highlight. So one and two give us an opportunity to really retain two excellent teachers who aren't ready to hang it up yet. And then, items five through seven, it's the time of year where we plan our summer programming, so this would be for our extended school year services. And then, the biggest bulk of the items, eight through 13, are all contractual moves based on one person moving to another position, and then that's when dominos start to happen.
Yeah.
So it's, it's good, change is good, and so we'll have a refresh in some areas for next school year, pending your approval on those items. And, and then the, the next items are regarding student teaching, and some of our team members are coming together over the summer to work on multi-tier systems of support, putting together some resources, and then planning some new curriculum for classes that are going to be offered next school year.
We have a lot of teachers switching around buildings.
Yeah.
I don't remember for, I don't know if it's forever, we had this many changes, but change is good. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
It brings us to supplemental contracts.
One minute.
One through five. Sorry.
One second.
Discussion.
So, Nick is going to be busy replacing some coaches in our athletic department, so we've had some coaches that had some different opportunities, and then also, our new math teacher is able to take on that position of the head girls varsity tennis coach. So she's spent some time supporting our boys tennis program as an assistant coach, so we're excited to have her in that role.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
It brings us to student workers. I'll move.
One second.
Discussion.
This is the program that Mr. Unix created and runs each year. Our students help support our tech needs, and it's great to have returning students, and then we have one new student to add to the list for next school year.
Eric, thank you for doing all this, taking care of all these kids and teaching them. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Recommendations. Do them separately? One second. A, it's the graduating seniors. so, you know, he's able to move into that role, which is great. It fills, fills a void there, and then also can continue to drive when we need him. So based on our contract, he would have a 15-day trial period in that role. And, yeah, and then Jen Trump is moving to the Mary Neff's position, so she would be taking that over, and, and we would have a new person coming in to fill the secretarial position in the guidance office. And Mr. Di Tomaso was going to share a little bit of information about Jackie for you.
Hi, welcome to Jackie Doyle. She, she comes to us from Northampton Christian Preschool, and as we talked about earlier with, you know, with Mary, right, retiring, and Jen moved from the counseling office to Mary's position, you know, that counseling office position is a, is a, that's a significant position to fill, you know? I mean, as we talked about in the interview, and Jackie actually referenced it, it's, you know, it's kind of the hub of the school. There's so many people work through that. So it's important, but we are super excited because, you know, graduate of Bowling Green and a very diverse background, and I think what shined, truly shined the most was a willingness to dive in and work and, you know, kind of this really excited nature of wanting to learn and be a part of it. So a lot of talk about team, a lot of talk about being a part of a good group of people, and so we're super excited for Jackie Doyle.
Thank you. And as I said, we get our agenda several days before, so all these moves were a lot to digest. We've already read them all and tried to figure them out, so this is the first time we've seen all this. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Supplemental contracts.
I'll move.
One through five, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'll second.
Discussion.
So Nick is going to be busy replacing some coaches in our athletic department, so we've had some coaches that had some different opportunities. And, and then also, our new math teacher is able to take on that position of the head girls varsity tennis coach. So she's spent some time supporting our boys tennis program as an assistant coach, so we're excited to have her in that role.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
He brings us to student workers. I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
This is the program that Mr. Unix created and runs each year. Our students help support our tech needs, and it's great to have returning students, and then we have one new student to add to the list for next school year.
Eric, thank you for doing all this, taking care of all these kids and teaching them. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Recommendations. Do them separately? One second. A, it's the graduating seniors. I will move.
Hold on, I'm not voting for this, by the way. She's like, what does that mean?
This one's always a little bit, right? Because we're voting on it before they actually walk across the stage. And so just, you know, by state law requires us to do this, and then, of course, it's pending, they meet all their graduation requirements tomorrow.
So can I ask, how many are graduating?
Um, we are going to release that information tomorrow.
Okay.
But it is a really great number.
Good. Make sure it gets out there to everybody. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
E, the summer school programs.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So earlier, you approved the staff for the programs, and so this is actually to approve the program, how the staff are looking.
And then do we have to approve the kids too, or is that?
No.
Just checking, we can do that all at once.
We did.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
C, student accident and football insurance.
I'll move.
Discussion.
Do you want to share about that, Tom?
Uh, this is just something that we offer every year to our students that are playing football, and to my knowledge, I'm not sure if anyone's ever taken it, but we offer it to all the families.
So if there's some kind of accident on the field or whatever, the parents, their insurance...
Yeah, their normal insurance. They could pick up this additional insurance as well.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Okay, game helper. I will move.
I'll second.
Discussion. Just adding one person.
Just adding.
Okay, all right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
School day starting and ending times.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Um, no, we just have to recommend this annually. These are the things, though.
Okay, just saying, all right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
School breakfast and lunch prices. I will move.
I'll second.
So just due to the cost of groceries, we did have to increase, we kept lunch the same, but just increased the breakfast for next school year.
Given the increase in food, that's really good.
Yeah, we were able to keep it still pretty low.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Red Oak Behavioral Health, health and wellness agreement.
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
So this is a contract we have with Red Oak for mental health liaison, so she supports just mental health needs groups. She also coordinates the wellness walk each year.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
The ABC therapy.
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
This is for the physical therapist that we contract for to support kids with those needs.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Next one, another ABC therapy, agreement amendment, LEAP, Garfield Heights. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, student placement outside of the district.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
ABA outreach services agreement.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This is to support needs for a student in our district that needs some additional behavior support.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Okay, K, ABA outreach services, summer. I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This is to support those behavioral needs during the summer.
Sure. Okay, I have to ask now. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
EA education alternative service agreement. I'll move.
I'll second.
Um, this is an out-of-district student placement.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
PEP, positive education program through the ESC.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Same, out-of-district student placement.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Kids Link Schools Contract.
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
Same.
Same. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
I am Boundless Inc., Adult Day Transition Services.
I'll move.
I'll second.
So this is the program that we refer to as Poenea. So they merged and the name changed, but it's that same program that we've contracted with before that supports our students with some intensive needs, job discovery, experience, and placement.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Okay, P, air life skills program agreement. I'll move. I'll second.
So this is the program that Beau Schlup is moving into. This adds that sociology component to the social studies department. It's a new program, grant-funded, really excited to do this, hands-on, teaching students to learn more about their strengths and developing that, really working on those real-life skills, and also in conjunction with community partnership and mentors throughout the process.
Now, is this March to June? So this is not during, oh, during a little bit of summer, but not?
Yeah, there's, yeah, a little bit of the summer for training.
Yeah. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
KQ, Sonic and Partners LLC agreement.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Anything?
Food services.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
AMHA Housing Authority, Honey Locust, Prank Drive Agreement for Use of Space.
I'll move. I'll second.
This is for our early childhood education preschool program.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
HNEO and EMIS, a shared services agreement.
I'll move.
I'll second.
This is for all that required data throughout the year, keeps us in compliance with the state.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, thank God we still get to work with Darlene Neal.
Yep, yeah. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Hmm. In lieu of transportation stipend.
I'll move. I'll move. I'll move.
I moved.
Okay, discussion. Nothing?
It is what it is.
I know, I don't like it, but it is what it is. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Thank you. Summit Education Initiative.
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
So SEI is a great partner for us, and this data sharing agreement is, we provide our data for them, and they're able to do demographics, so they can give us achievement, how we compare with the county attendance, and then just like different level, the different levels there too. So it's a great resource for us to have.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Summit Educational Service Center Auxiliary Services, LEA, Agreement for Summit Christian School. I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Tom, you want to talk about this?
Um, so Summit Christian Academy, or Summit Christian School, I'm sorry, down at our old Northampton Elementary, they do an agreement with Summit ESC to provide them services, I believe, tutor, I can't remember which other one it was, but this, just so everyone understands, this does not come out of Woodridge Funds, because Summit Christian is an auxiliary service school in our district. We get state funding on their behalf, it can only be used on them, and that's what this money is being used for.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Student Handbooks, 2025, 2026, school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
These are the handbooks we shared last month, and I didn't receive any comments on it, they're pretty standard, just a couple tweaks from what we had before.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidy.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Okay, we're all the way down to X. Cross-Thread Solutions LLC, Interpreting Services Agreement.
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
This is a really important contract for us to have, because in our district, we speak 11 different languages.
Wow.
So it's a great resource that's used often to communicate with our families.
Can you name all 11?
I sure can.
I didn't tell her I was going to ask this either.
Uh, but we have Arabic, Spanish, Russian, Armenian, Uzbek, Nepali, Turkish, Creole, French, Romanian, and Karen.
Wow. Good for you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidy.
And no YZ. How about that? We're in finance now, Mr. Morehouse. We have purchase orders. I'll move.
I'll second.
So unfortunately, there's two purchase orders I'm asking you for approval tonight, because it's a service that's ongoing, we just didn't get the requisition and purchase order in time. First one, First Security Services, that is at our other auxiliary school, it's basically, they're police officers, the private police that they use, like our school resource officer. It's been going on for quite a bit this year, and we just missed getting a requisition in for the month of April. And again, this does not come out of our money, this comes out of the money that we hold on behalf of Faith Islamic Academy. The second one, the NEONET, so when I was looking at the agenda and saw the NEONET agreement on there, I started looking and realized we never did a requisition to pay for this year's NEONET services for EMIS. So luckily, the agenda hadn't gone out yet, so I put it on there real quick, but this is why I'm asking for agreement, or for you guys to agree to approve these purchase orders for me.
They didn't ask for it?
They haven't billed us yet.
Oh, okay. All right.
If they had, it'd have come out a lot sooner.
Gotcha. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Leidig.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
And here we go again, five-year forecast.
Okay. I will try to be as brief as possible, as possible as for me to be brief. There we go, okay. So as you know, we approved originally five-year forecast in November, and we always do a spring update, and that's what I'm here to talk about this evening. So the five-year forecast shows three things, your expected revenues, your expenditures, and your cash flow. So you can see by this graph, our blue line is our revenues, our expenditures is our red lines, and our green line is our cash, our cash balances, okay? You can see how the blue line right here is starting to level off and act like go down. You can see where the red line is going up and up and up, and you can see right here where it crosses, basically that means we start spending more than we're taking in. And as I always say, when you look at these and you see that gap getting bigger and bigger, all that means is your cash balance is going down. And throughout the forecast, our revenue is expected to go down by 1.28%, our expenditures are rising by point, excuse me, 4.39%. We are expected to start deficit spending next year, it's, we haven't done that in a while, but it's going to be getting deep, our deficit spendings are going to be getting deeper and deeper as we go along. So some revenue notes on this forecast, we do have one levy renewal in this forecast. As of right now, I'm not projecting to have a new money levy, but we do have one levy renewal in this forecast that will be due. I bring up 2026 County Reappraisal, okay? So if you remember back in 2023, when the state mandated all counties go up on average at 30%, no matter what, everyone went up, and the Woodridge district itself went up about 25% of property values. The reappraisal, so three years later, what they do is they actually go out and look at every home, and they value each and every home. So I bring this to your attention, because it's in 2026, so it's coming up in this forecast, and I'll bring it up, start talking about it, get a little bit later. Here's my bigger concerns, the state budget. So everyone knows, every two years, the state develops a budget, it's the Bionian budget. The governor proposed his budget in February, okay? If you recall, four years ago, they adopted the Fair School Funding Plan, and they said it would take six years to fully implement, okay? We're in year four, so everyone's hoping they would continue to adopt it for the next two years, because it really develops a plan. If you recall, way back in the day, we always used to be funded by the number of students that we had. Now, it truly tries to fund what it costs to educate a child, okay? So it's more based on expenditures than what it costs. The governor did propose to keep that funding there, but he did tweak it, okay? Those tweaks, actually, there's $103 million less for public schools. All in the meantime, he's proposing $448 million more for vouchers. So public school funding's going down, but the vouchers for private schools are going up. That's the governor's plan, okay? There is a lot of proposed legislation out there right now regarding schools. There's 14 proposed laws right now, and that could change, it could go up, that could impact our profit taxes and our local funding, and I talk about a couple of these throughout the forecast here. Okay, talked about the governor's budget, okay? In the governor's budget, like I said, $103 million less, a lot of schools in Summit County lost money over the two-year period. Woodridge was actually standing to gain money, okay, about $500,000 over this two-year period under the governor's plan. The House came in and said, the Fair School Funding Plan will still be in existence, but ODW is going to be not allowed, they're not allowed to fund schools according to the plan. They're developing what's called a bridge funding. They're going to make sure every school gets an increase. Woodridge will still get an increase, but about half of what the governor is proposing, okay? That's one thing, that we want the Fair School Funding Plan to stay, because there's existence with that, okay? You can plan for the future, it allows you to know what's going to be happening. With the bridge, there's really no mechanism to it, it's best, kind of like they used to do, it's like, all right, we've got X amount of dollars, divvy it up. So you really can't plan for the future that way. But the bigger concern is what the House is looking to do is 30% carryover cap. We talked about this a month ago. What they're looking to do is to make sure any school district doesn't carry, doesn't have a carryover that's more than 30% of your previous year's expenditures, okay? Woodridge, the past few years, has done a lot of financial planning, and the board did, made some very good decisions with what we've done with ESAR. We've had expenses that we're going to have, we were able to use ESAR funds instead of using the general fund. A number of years ago, we switched our insurance benefits, employees took concessions. This has helped save the general fund, okay? So it's built up for right now, but you saw by the lines where that's heading. In another five or six years, we're going to be out of cash, okay? So it scares a lot of school districts, this 30% cap rule, because there's a lot of things you look at, you know, if someone passes a brand-new levy, and you know when you pass a brand-new levy, that first year is kind of like front-loaded, because you're passing a levy to save for future expenditures, right? So now, if the 30% cap rule comes in, a community made a decision to support a school district by passing a levy, state's going to take it right back, okay? You just give it back to the homeowners, they're going to give credits. They're advertising this as tax reform, it's really not tax reform, it's giving you credit for a couple of years. This can really hurt school districts.
So they're punishing you for being good stewards of the money and planning ahead.
Yes.
They're punishing you.
And I couldn't have put it better, because that's what, we've talked to some of our legislators, and said, you're penalizing people for actually trying to plan ahead. I mean, you think about things like this with, if you're taking away our 30% cap, you know, a lot of times, we'll enter agreements for up to five years, well, the longer agreement you can have, okay, the more you're going to save. But with something like this, you're not going to be able to enter long-term agreements. Let's say we needed to build, so picture yourself back 10 years ago, when we were trying to get the levy through for the new elementary, okay? When you do that, you do that through bonds, you get bond rated. You reduce your cash balance, your rating's going down, and all it's going to do is increase your interest rates, so it's going to cost you more money. But legislation doesn't want to hear about things like that. So the 30% cap rule right now really has a lot of school districts across the entire state concerned. Other things they're looking at, 20 mil floor, we have four renewal levies that are all fixed-dollar levies, okay? Those aren't subject to the 20 mil floor. What someone in the state is looking to do is make sure all of our levies are part of the 20 mil floor, okay? 20 mil floor allows you growth, because by law, every community has to contribute to the cost of education. So when these levies, when you're at 20 mil floor, which we have been for the past two years, you have growth in your base, okay? When you're not at the 20 mil floor, you lost that growth. So by adding our fixed-dollar levies, we'll probably never be back to the 20 mil floor, if that goes through. Petition for Constitutional Amendment, this is kind of brand-new, it's just come more news about the past week or two, okay? There's a group out there trying to get a petition, get enough signatures on it, to put on the November ballot for the entire state of Ohio to do away with all property taxes, okay? Not just for schools, that's for everybody. You know, so you think, all right, how are police and fire going to be funded? I don't want an emergency, if there's no money to pay my police or fire to come to my house. Roads, all the roads are going to, so it's like, where's this money going to come from? So if they do with property taxes, maybe it's going to be sales tax, maybe it's something else, but right now, that's what they're looking to do. One thing I forgot to mention with 30% cap, that's only public school districts, okay? So your counties, your villages, your cities, they aren't going to be subject to any 30% cap, or whatever they want it to be. And it's surely not going to be in effect for private schools. It's only public education that they're going after. All right, so as we always look at our revenue, right now, basically, we are 84% local-funded and just under 16% state-funded. We are one of the lowest districts in the state of Ohio as far as state revenue, percentage-wise. So we'll talk about our operating expenses, okay? As I said, the board made some good, excellent choices with ESAR, what we did with them, okay? So we were able to utilize some services we were going to have to have, we were able to tie them into COVID funds and use the ESAR, okay? ESAR's gone, it ended in September, right? So now, we've got six staff members, which equates to about 4.4 and 3/4 full-time equivalent staff members are coming, those expenses are coming back to the general fund now. They weren't being paid out of ESAR, now it's coming to the general fund. So every year, it's almost $550,000 additional debt we hadn't been spending, we're going to have to now. Virtual program, our WVA, okay? Their curriculum and services we have, that's what's coming out of ESAR. That's going to be another $130,000, again, we're building it every year. Building substitutes, Wally Davis, at the beginning of COVID, had the great idea, because we always had like one permanent, so-called permanent building sub per building. Well, with COVID, we foresaw a lot more absences, so we were able to get a couple more and use ESAR funds tied into ESAR, okay? Now that we've got those subs, they're not going away, because we just have a big problem filling subs, so that is money that used to come out of ESAR, now it's going to be coming out of the general fund. Additional teaching, this current year and this, and next year, so we added a computer science teacher, special education grew again, we had 20-some new students before the beginning of the year, we had to add special education, and we're seeing more special education coming in next year that we're going to have to add staff. Health insurance, okay? Last year, with the dental and medical increase, we reckon has a 17.34% increase. I was hoping it would calm down, it came down some, but not nearly enough, so we're hoping these two years, this year, when you average again, our medical and dental together, it's about a 14.23% increase, okay? Over the life of, the next three years of the forecast, I'm projecting 10%. Hopefully, this last year and this year brings that back down a little bit, so we're not having to pay such high increases, okay? As we always look at where our expenditure's going, what's the biggest cost of us, we're a service industry, okay? We don't have widgets, we don't make things, so it's going to be in staff. So we're at 76.9%. Okay, cash balances, as I said, you know, you can look at here, and you can see the trajectory right here, okay? It's going down and down. Now, here's to the end of the forecast fiscal year '29, right? What if that same trajectory keeps happening? What's going to happen beyond '29? You can see in fiscal year '30, we're standing to be underwater, okay? So it's something to keep our eye on, especially when you look at this, all right? Here's the four levies that I was talking about, okay? Here's the one levy coming up during this renewal, okay? So remember a few minutes ago when I talked about the reappraisal coming in 2026? So that 2026 will affect what we pay in taxes on your, in 2027, okay? That's when our next renewal levy is going to be. So it's something we're going to have to keep and monitor on, what everyone's doing. Now, what I'm hoping is, because the counties didn't want to raise everyone 25 to 30%, that was the state mandating that, because prices of homes skyrocketed during COVID, so the state said you need to raise the values to come more in line of what they're selling for. So what I'm hoping is, when they go out to your home, and your individual home, and you look at, they don't go into your house, but they look at each property, right? What I'm hoping is they look at them and say, we raised it enough, it's not going to go up that much more. I could even foresee some people's maybe even going down, you know? We just don't have, we don't know, but it's something to keep our eye on, okay? The other thing to talk about then, is we talked about the cash balance, right? So during this levy cycle, again, this is assuming legislation doesn't go through as is, is to be proposed, everything stays normal, okay? So you can see what's happened to our cash, and you see right here where this orange line turns to blue, that's when we're showing in the negative, right when this levy's due, 2030. So as I brought to you guys' attention last year, it's something in the next few years the board's going to have to think about. What do we want to do with that levy? Do we want to try and renew that levy and a new money levy at the same time? Do we want to combine this? Do we want to tell our constituents, hey, folks, we'll let this levy go off the ballot if we can get a new levy passed in place of it? So it's just something to think about over the next couple of years, okay? Other things to think about, a couple of things here, items worth consideration, the Merriman Valley Schumacher Master Plan, okay? This is again, the master plan for the Merriman Valley combined with Cogga Falls and the city of Akron. While there has the potential to increase the tax base, what worries us is the housing that could follow this, especially Akron talks more about it than Cogga Falls does. We're busting at the seams now at our elementary, we can't absorb a lot more kids, okay? So that's kind of what worries me with this whole project. We talked about the potential legislation. So if the 30% rule goes in, right now, I'm trying to project how that's going to affect it. Supposedly, if it takes effect, it's not going to take effect until January of '27, okay? So the problem is, you think about your taxes, you pay on a calendar-year basis. Our fiscal year is July to June, right? So the first time it takes effect, it's only going to affect six months. So what they're planning on doing is reduces everyone, reducing everyone's taxes, giving them a credit until we get back below that 30%. So what I tried to do here was kind of project, I took our expenditures, I said, all right, what if we have expenditures and they never go up? That's not realistic, but for this purpose, I tried to make, what if they never go up? So I took 30% of those, okay? And then I looked at our forecast and cash balance, and this is how much, almost $12 million that the state could be taking away from us, okay? And just under that, $11 million the next year and so forth, to where you start reducing these, and starting fiscal year '27 through '29, this is what our cash balance could be reduced to, $13 million, $2 million, and '29, we could be in the hole a lot more than I projected. You know, I'm looking at 2030, '31 being the negative a little bit. If this goes through, we could project it to be in '29, way in the hole. So we still don't know what's going to happen, we're not going to know until the end of June, hopefully we'll know by the end of June. One time, they didn't settle until July. So I don't know, really don't know what's going to happen with this, it's got a lot of school districts scared, not just Woodridge, because it really, this is the biggest major overhaul I've ever seen in 35 years with public education. We just don't know what's going to happen.